Ladies and gentlemen, we're calling the meeting to order for the Planning and Zoning Commission for the Town of Silver City, December the 3rd, 2024. If you would be so good as to rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. Could we please do a roll call?
Commissioner Bayless? Commissioner Bayless?
Present.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Middlestaff?
Here.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
Present.
Thank you. With that, the next item on the list will be the approval of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to read the agenda?
Yes.
Any changes, do you think? Entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda for the, where's the date there? The December 3rd, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Hearing none. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passed unanimously. The next item on the list is the approval of minutes of the November 7th meeting of this year. Has everyone had a chance to read those minutes?
Yes.
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 Is there a motion there perhaps to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes of the November 7th meeting.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any corrections? Hearing none. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Next item on the list is reports, but I don't see any. Next item is community input. Is there any community input that is not related to the two public hearings that we're going to be doing? Peace and serenity reigns. The next item on the list will be a public hearing for a variance, specifically VA 24-03, a request for a variance from Section 3.3.2 E6, dimensional and operational standards for accessory uses and structures, maximum building or structure size in residential areas for installation of a 1,211 square foot accessory dwelling unit on the residential property addressed as 1104 Sotol Drive, Silver City, New Mexico. The applicant is S.R. Matous. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, which means that we follow a pretty specific procedure and very careful flow of control when we discuss and ask questions and things like that. Before proceeding, has anyone on the commission had any expertise discussions on either correction on this case with any of the parties to the case, or do you have any financial interest in that property?
No.
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 And I haven't either. Unanimously, we have no conflicts of interest and we therefore have a quorum. This is a variance request. The process will be that the town will present a report, and what we will be listening for is the various facts in that report, because how do we make a decision? We have to meet certain findings. For a variance, there are seven findings. So that's what we're looking for. The staff report will address that. We will then, when the staff report is finished, the applicant and anyone who wishes to speak in favor or against can question, cross-examine staff. When that's finished, we will then ask the applicant to present their case if they so choose, and when they have finished, they can also be cross-examined. And then we will ask those speaking in favor and those against the application to speak. In order to speak, it's important that you be sworn in. So anyone who wishes to speak on this variance and also town staff, if you would be so good as to approach the podium with a log sheet so that we can log who has been sworn in, and then we will conduct the swearing-in. Just because you're sworn in does not mean you have to testify. So if you even think you might want to ask a question, go ahead and be sworn in. Doesn't cost extra. If you would be so good as to raise your right hand and repeat. I state your name.
I, Jackie Olaya.
S.R. Matous.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That the testimony I am about to give?
That the testimony that I am about to give.
In the matter before this commission?
In the matter before this commission.
Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Under penalty of perjury?
Under penalty of perjury.
And if staff would present their report, please.
Thank you, Chairman. On October 17th, 2024, Mr. Matous submitted an application for a variance to Section 3.3.2 E6, dimensional and operational standards for accessory uses and structures for the installation of a 1,211 square foot accessory dwelling unit on his residential property. According to Section 6.3.19A of the Land Use and Zoning Code of 2010, a variance allows a structure, a building or structure to be built if strict enforcement of the land use code would result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships for the applicant, and that by granting the variance, the spirit of the land use code will be observed, public safety and welfare secured, and substantial justice done. Under no condition shall a variance permit a use that is not otherwise permitted in a zoning district where the property is located. According to Section 3.3.2 E6 of the Land Use and Zoning Code of 2010, except for otherwise expressly limited or allowed in this section, and except for accessory recreational facilities including swimming pools, the maximum floor area for accessory buildings and structures in residential areas shall be calculated as follows. A, 600 square feet of a building footprint on any legal parcel or B, 1,000 square feet of a gross floor area on parcels smaller than one-half acre or 50% of the gross floor area of a principal structure, whichever is less, or C, 50% of the gross floor area of a principal structure on parcels one-half acre or larger located in areas where adjacent lots are one-half acre or larger. The Grant County Assessors GIS parcel data indicates the gross floor area of the principal structure on Mr. Matous's property is 1,120 square feet. The lot size is .275 acres. Based on this regulation, the maximum building structure size allowed on the subject property is 600 square feet. The proposed accessory dwelling unit in 12, is 1,211 square feet. Mr. Matous stated in his application he intends to remove the 1,120 square foot primary structure once the construction of the 1,211 square foot accessory structure is completed. The application was reviewed by the Utilities, Fire, Public Works, Police, Engineering, Meters, and Code Enforcement Departments. No comments were received. As required by Section 6.2.11 of the Land Use Code of 2010, the Community Development Department contacted 11 landowners identified by the Grant County Assessors parcel data by U.S. Mail within 300 feet of the project area. No responses were received by the department. The finding, the findings, the Planning and Zoning Commission shall only approve a variance if it makes the following findings, as required by the Land Use and Zoning Code Section 6.3.19D. One, the hardship to which the applicant complains is one unique to the applicant rather than one suffered by the neighbors or the general public, and the hardship relates to the applicant's land or property, and the hardship was not created by deliberate action of the applicant or by one under his control, and reasonable remedies are not presently available, and granting the variance is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, and granting the variance is in harmony with the purposes and intent of the land use code, and granting the variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood surrounding the property where the variance is proposed, and otherwise not detrimental to public welfare, and the variance will not result in the extension, expansion, or enlargement of a non-conforming structure in violating, in violation of Article 7, and will not authorize the initiation of a non-conforming use of land. The recommendation, it is the opinion of the Community Development Department that this variance application may be approved based on meeting the seven findings as required. Condition, the 1,120 square foot structure is removed from the property or demolished within one year of receiving the certificate of occupancy for the 1,211 square foot structure.
Does that complete, does that complete the town's case in chief?
Yes, Chairman.
Next would be, we would ask the applicant if you wish to address your case, and in which case approach the podium, and if you could address the seven findings, that would be very helpful. Thank you, sir.
Sure, thank you. The seven findings first, or my reason for the request?
Whatever works best for you.
Okay, I'll read my reason. To the Community Development Department, on my property, I will build an elegant, highly efficient, custom site-built home, and I request a variance to allow me to temporarily keep my present dwelling, the 1978 single-wide mobile home onsite while I build, for I cannot afford to pay rent elsewhere and also build. As soon as I'm done building and receive my certificate of occupancy, I will dismantle and remove the mobile home. Thank you for your consideration. Shall I go through the list?
If you would be so good, yes.
Yes. One, the hardship of which the applicant complains is one that is unique to the applicant rather than one suffered by the neighbors or the general public. Yes. To have, to remove the existing 1978 single-wide, which serves as my temporary dwelling before building, will render me financially incapable of building. Two, the hardship relates to the applicant's land or property? Yes. Three, the hardship was not created by the deliberate action of the applicant or by one under his control, and reasonable remedies are not presently available. Correct. The 1978 single-wide was present on the property when I purchased it, and two, I cannot remedy that by removing it before I build because I cannot afford to pay rent elsewhere and build. Four, the granting of the variance is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan? Yes. My highly efficient, site-built custom home will be a positive contribution to the subdivision and the Town of Silver City in general. Five, the granting of the variance is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the land use code? Yes. The new site-built custom home will be 100% in compliance with the land use code, and as soon as my certificate of occupancy is issued, I will commence the removal of the 1978 single-wide structure, or mobile home, I'm sorry. Six, the granting of the variance will not be injurious, injurious to the neighborhood surrounding the property where the variance is proposed, and otherwise is not detrimental to the public welfare. Correct. On the contrary, the building of a new onsite custom home and the removal of the old 1978 single-wide mobile home will be an improvement to the surrounding area. Seven, the variance will not result in the extension, expansion, or enlargement of a non-conforming structure in violation of the article, of Article 7, and will not authorize the initiation of a non-conforming use of land. Correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any commissioner have any questions for the applicant? And then after that, any questions for town staff?
I do have a question for the town staff. I noted on the report, in the analysis section, that there's a reference to Mr. Castro's property, and I was wondering if that was a mistake.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Kennedy, yes, that was a clerical error, so I will update that for the rest. Thank you.
Does any commissioner have any questions at all for me?
I have a question for staff.
Please, go ahead, yes.
I was wondering if we could make the conditions more specific, instead of saying the 1,211 square foot structure, if we might say the 1978 single-wide mobile home at 1,211 square feet? So it's much more precise than what we're asking him to remove.
Chairman, Commissioner Middlestaff, just whatever condition?
As long as, I did discuss with Mr. Matous, so if you would like the structure to be more explicitly stated, that is definitely something that can be done. He is in agreeance for the timeline, and so I think the schematics of the wording, if that's something you would like to state more clearly.
So would we do that in our motion? Will we spell that out, that condition?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a point of information, to help Mr. Matous and to help me, does a person who wishes to demolish a structure, do they need a permit from the city to do that?
Chairman and Commissioner Bayless, yes, they do, it does require a demolition permit, which is free of charge.
Just curious.
Any other questions for staff? Or the applicant? In which case, so do you have any questions for staff at all?
No.
Okay. In which case I would entertain a motion.
I move for the approval of the request for VA 24-3, a request for a variance for Section 3.3.2 E6, dimensional and operational standards for accessory uses and structures, maximum building or structure size in residential areas for the installation of a 1,211 square foot accessory dwelling unit on the residential property addressed as 1104 Sotol Drive in Silver City, New Mexico, with the condition that the 1978 single-wide mobile home at 1,120 square feet is removed from the property or demolished within one year of receiving the certificate of occupancy for the new site-built 1,211 square foot structure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Did staff manage to capture the condition? Okay. And given that, the question is, out for discussion? Any further discussion?
Well, I appreciate the flexibility that this is affording, because as many of our homes become aged out and become irreparable, we're going to need to look at solutions like this. So I'm happy to see something like this come before us.
I agree. I, in reading the, rereading the code on variances, I think the, the sentence before the findings emphasizes that sometimes one does have to come up with creative solutions. And this does set a, somewhat of a precedent for similar cases, so I'm very glad that this one was brought before us. Do you have, sir, have any questions, if I may ask, on the condition that has been refined?
Essentially, still the same, and I'm perfectly clear about it, and it sounds really good to me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you would like to be seated again, in which case, with no further discussion, could we please do a roll call on the approval of VA 2403, as stated before, with the condition as stated, but more specific?
Commissioner Bayless?
I vote in favor of it.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Middlestaff?
Aye.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
Aye.
With that, the ayes have it, there were no noes, and the next process is that staff will draft up a notice of decision. When the notice of decision is promulgated, there is the availability if anyone with standing wishes to appeal. If they do, they should contact Community Development to get the timelines and also the process for an appeal. The appeal, you have to specify a couple of things. One of them, why you have standing to file the appeal, and secondly, why you believe the commission erred in its decision-making process. The record shows that the seven findings that were required were met by the facts as presented, and with that, I would say that this hearing is closed. Congratulations, sir. The next item on the agenda is a conditional use permit, CU 24-01, a request for a conditional use permit for a Class II cannabis manufacturer for the commercial property addressed as 412 West Broadway Street, Silver City, New Mexico. This use is allowed in the commercial historic zoning district with a conditional use permit. The applicant is the Werber Family Trust, represented by Diane Barrett, Nana's Hands, New Mexico, LLC. And as before, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, so we follow a fairly rigid process. Anyone who wishes to testify, namely the applicant, anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application, anyone who wishes to speak in opposition, and town staff who intend to speak, I would ask you to come forward to be sworn in. If you would be so good, right hand, and say after me. I state your name.
Aye, Diane Barrett.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That the testimony I am about to give?
That the testimony I am about to give.
In this matter before the commission?
In this matter before the commission.
Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Under penalty of perjury?
Under the penalty of perjury.
Thank you. If you would like to return to your seats, and then we will begin, as before, with the staff report.
CU 24-01, request for a conditional use permit for Class II cannabis manufacturing for the property addressed as 412 West Broadway Street, Silver City, New Mexico. This use is allowed in the commercial historic district with a conditional use permit. The applicant is Werber Family Trust, represented by Diane Barrett, Nana's Hands, N.M., LLC. Cannabis II manufacturer, defined as Sections 3.3.1H1D, as a licensee that conducts Class I activities and manufactures edible products or topical products using infusion processes or other types of cannabis products other than extracts or concentrates, and does not conduct extractions. And the commercial historic district requires a conditional use permit. Ms. Barrett submitted a conditional use application to the Community Development Department on October 22nd, 2024. This property is currently licensed for business as a cannabis producer micro-business, Nana's Hands, N.M., LLC. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to manufacture cannabis salves and cannabis edibles. If the conditional use permit is granted, all applicable standards of Section 3.3.1H of the Town of Silver City Land Use and Zoning Code shall apply. After a departmental review of the application, the Code Enforcement, Fire, Police, Utilities, Public Works, Meters, and Engineering Divisions had no comment. As required by six point, as required by Section 6.2.11 of the Land Use and Zoning Code of 2010, the Community Development Department contacted 49 landowners identified by the Grant County Assessors parcel data by U.S. Mail within 300 feet of the project area. Of the 49 landowners notified, one letter was returned as undeliverable, and another was submitted on December 2nd, 2024, and I will read that into the record. Good afternoon, Jackie. Jeff and I own properties at 211 and 215 North Yankee Street. As such, receive the notice regarding the conditional use permit for Class II cannabis manufacturing. We have significant reservations regarding this request stemming from three issues. One, fire safety in an older building. What fire code or fire suppression improvements will be made to ensure that the safety of the building and the entire downtown? I know Diane has expressed that manufacturing will be done with a hot plate and a crock pot, so why the need for a conditional use permit if production is so simple that it could be done in a kitchen? The reason that it is manufacturing can be expanded and new equipment procured. This is nothing to ensure the integrity of the manufacturing process is safe. Two, as a resident of the greater Denver area, I know that oil factory nuisance any cannabis production can be. If this is truly a sophisticated manufacturing process, then venting should be considered. Bottom line is that I would rather smell the crisp, clean air of Silver City than the uniquely skunky smell of cannabis. Three, I worry about the degradation of the neighborhood overall. The city has learned the hard way that not all businesses that have the best interest of town in mind, the Bullard Street dispensary being case in point. We have also seen an uptick in drug usage, homelessness, and trespassing on and near our property since the legalization of marijuana in New Mexico. We also worry about having a cannabis protection facility next to the museum. The two uses seem contradictory. Therefore, I would recommend the Planning and Zoning Commission deny the request for a conditional use permit. Please let us know if there is a way we can participate to the hearing virtually. The findings, Planning and Zoning Commission shall apply or make relevant of all the following findings to the request at hand. One, it will not endanger public health or safety. Two, will not injure the value of the adjoining or neighboring properties. Three, will be harmonious in the area which it is located, and four, will be in conformity with the town's comprehensive plans and other plans officially adopted by the town. Recommendation, it is the Community Development Department staff recommends this request be approved as it meets all four findings as required.
And does that complete the town's staff report in chief?
Yes, Chairman.
Do, does any commissioner have any questions for the town staff? At this point? Hearing none. Would the applicant care to come forward and present your case?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Diane Barrett, and I am the founder of Diane's Restaurant Bakery Deli, basically a good community business partner. A couple of years ago, I was involved in an auto crash, and I had my thumb in the steering wheel. At any rate, popped my shoulder out of the socket, and I had to have my hand surgery and stuff. And funny enough, what lifting, working with these herbs is very similar to some of the stuff I learned, like making lavender creme brulees and things like that. At any rate, you know, necessity being the mother of invention, I developed a great pain salve. And to get a manufacturer's license, we've already been in there as a microbusiness for a couple of years. The, the building, 412 North Broadway, has been in my son's family for five decades, and we've been in there for a couple of years already. We are not open to the public, we have five employees, we don't need extra parking, we don't have foot traffic, we're not to be compared with that business down on Bullard, hopefully. And, but we, I would like to get a conditional use permit because we are in the historic district. All I am using is a hot plate and a crock pot. We are also in a building that was built as the bomb shelter right after World War II. I am in a small room in the bottom basement. I, I use no solvents, no open flame. It's pretty, you know, it's, it's a pretty simple thing, and I'm just hoping you guys allow me to do this.
Does that complete, does that complete your case in chief?
I guess, unless you guys got any questions.
Does any commissioner have any questions for the applicant?
I have a question. Are you planning to expand beyond your current capacity in the near future?
You mean beyond three to five part-time employees I have? Maybe, but so far, no, we haven't, yes, possibly to do some edibles. Right now, I'm really interested in the salve, because it's really pretty, pretty amazing thing, and that's really what I want to do. The edibles get much more complicated, but yes, people would like me to do the edibles because of my history in food. So we'll see if I expand into that. But no, no foot traffic, no cars, I don't plan on being open to the public unless we do something totally that I don't know about now.
Commissioner Middlestaff?
Yes, just to get a notion as to the volume of processing you're doing, it sounds like it's pretty miniscule, but let me just ask this, since people seem to have concerns about vapors and fumes and this kind of thing, how many pounds of cannabis would you process in a day in the, in the, in the work that you do to produce your salve?
Let's see, yeah, I take about a pound and a half. I take six pounds. I take six pounds of cannabis and process it with just about no fumes in a crock pot, and it makes enough for about 600 jars of my salve. And so, right now, I am only in seven dispensaries right in our town, and one shop in Deming, and one shop in Las Cruces. And I mean, I would only like to get larger because I'm just trying to save the world, you know, a thumb and elbow at a time because the stuff really does work. But it's pretty small potatoes, but no. I learned how to make this, just like, you know, baking and pastries and stuff. I learned how to make these concentrates, and it doesn't take a lot. Doesn't take a lot.
I have a question for Jackie.
Yes, go ahead.
I have a question for staff.
Yes.
Oh, okay, Jackie. Can you explain this business? My understanding, it's been operating for a couple of years?
Yes, I don't have an exact date, but they have been operating as a cannabis production micro-business, which is defined as an area that can produce up to 200 cannabis plants at once.
And what triggered them needing to come in for the conditional use permit?
Because cannabis manufacture II is a conditional use in the Historic District.
But my understanding was that they were here before?
So, the business that they currently have is for production, so they are trying to update their business license with manufacture, and since the use is changing, they would need a conditional use for the property to be able to get the business license to expand to manufacturing.
And so what's the difference between production and manufacturing?
So, production is growing the cannabis. Manufacturing is processing.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant? And my next question will be, if you've completed, please feel free to return to your seat. And I think someone else was sworn in to testify. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Eileen Shepherd. I'm a doctor of Oriental medicine, and I've been working in this community as a sole proprietor since 2012, and also a personal friend of Diane's. And I've had a very great respect for Diane since I moved to town and started my business. I've known that she's ran her restaurant and her deli with just great integrity, incredibly hard worker. And I've had the opportunity to get to know her now personally as well, and I just have nothing but admiration and respect for what she's doing. She feels very passionate about her products. I personally use her products. They help me with my pain tremendously, and my pain is what got me into my own profession. I would very much love to see my own patients have a place to go to locally to get her products and to know and ensure that she does have this manufacturing capability and processing capability to keep her products growing and expanding in the community. I think they're phenomenal. And so I just personally wanted to come and just add my two cents to that as well. So, I greatly hope that you guys can consider granting Diane this permanent condition or this permit for her to be able to expand her business.
Thank you. Does any commissioner have any questions for the speaker?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And doubling-checking my checklist, I wanted to verify that no commissioner had had ex parte discussions or financial involvement with the applicant. Is that Commissioner Kennedy?
I have no contact or ex parte.
Commissioner Middlestaff?
No.
Commissioner Bayless?
No contact, although Diane's chocolate cake is award-winning and quite yummy. And if she takes the same care and precision that she's had in her culinary work to this, it should be a success.
Thank you. That's most helpful. The letter that was received by Dana and Jeff Oom is either of those parties here this evening? I do have a couple of questions myself. One of them goes back to the applicant. I noticed in the contract or the lease that the term that expired, and there is a renewal clause. So, the question I have is, was that lease renewed?
Yes.
Thank you. The next comment I have or question is, in the time that you have been functioning, have you had any fires that needed to be extinguished?
No.
And have you received any complaints of an olfactory nature? That answers my questions. Any other questions or comments from staff or commissioners?
Chairman Weemsmith, if I may, I just want to also extend that I did email back the Ooms to give them the option to give a conference call, and I've received no response.
Okay. Thank you. In which case, I would entertain a motion for the conditional use permit 24-01.
Okay. I motion to approve conditional use permit 24-1, a request for conditional use permit for Class II cannabis manufacturer for the property addressed as 412 West Broadway Street, Silver City, New Mexico. This use is allowed in the Commercial Historic Zoning District with a conditional use permit.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve conditional use 24-01 as specified. Is there any further discussion amongst the commissioners? No. In which case, if I could ask staff if we could conduct a roll call?
Commissioner Bayless?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Middlestaff?
Aye.
Chairman Weemsmith?
Aye.
The ayes have it, there was no dissent, so it was unanimous. And a couple of points, the first of which is that anyone with standing can appeal, and it's similar to the speech I made with the previous case. To do so, anyone who wishes to appeal should contact Community Development to check the timelines and what you have to do in order to file an appeal. An appeal requires standing, which means you have to fit within the criterion, for example, within 300 feet of the property or a financial interest. You then have to state why you believe there's a flaw in the decision-making that the commission handled. Appeals when processed do go to the town council. I will add a comment that this is a new ordinance that has come into play, 1333, I believe, and we are bound to follow it to the letter of the law. In other words, we have no discretion. If there are issues, they do need to be substantiated as opposed to unsubstantiated concerns. But if anyone who wishes to appeal finds that we didn't do due diligence in listening to the testimony, then you do have the opportunity to appeal. With that, the conditional use permit 24-01 will be approved. There will be a notice of decision produced by Community Development. And hearing nothing else, this hearing is closed. The next item on the agenda is... Did I screw up?
No, you're just enthusiastic.
Oh, good. Okay. I had good news today, by the way. Something so. Continued business, there is none. New business? We have the approval of a new bylaw, Section 2.11 of electronic meetings. And I'm hoping that every commissioner has had a chance to read that. The reason for this is that we are obligated by the bylaws to use Robert's Rules of Order. Robert specifically states that if we're going to have communications by telephone or video or any other means, it does have to be specified in the bylaws. So this is part of my going through the bylaws to find weaknesses or areas we could improve. Robert has four different versions of this particular bylaw, each of which is many pages long, and I've cut it down to just a few sentences, and it was reviewed by the town attorney. So that's the reason for this particular item. Any questions on that?
No, I thought it was great.
Any questions from staff? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion to approve bylaw 2.1.1 as a new bylaw which will go into our handbook, which will be published in January of 2025. So, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the planning and zoning bylaw change by adding a new section, 2.11. Did you say 2.211?
2.11.
2.11, okay. So I move to approve that.
Chairman, is it Section 2.11 or is it 2.1.1?
Oh, thank you. Very good point. 2.11. It's just I'm used to saying the numerals separately. Thank you very much. That's a good clarification. We have a motion. Is there perhaps a second?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, this is a good idea in the age of social media, Zoom and GoToMeeting and all that. This is just in line with what's out there. So it seems like a good idea.
The thing I liked about it was that anyone appearing by phone or by video should be properly established at least 15 minutes prior to the thing. And also, if there's a problem with communication, which we have had in the past with one or two cases, that does not invalidate any decisions that are made by the commission. And again, that language is from the 54,000 pages that Robert's Rules of Order managed to magically expand into. Okay, well, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion?
This will be very useful the next time I'm in South Africa.
Yes. And by the way, thank you very much for offering to help out at the last meeting. I very much appreciate that. Thank you. In which case, if I could ask, since this is a bylaw change, could we do a roll call?
Commissioner Bayless?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Middlestaff?
Aye.
Chairman Weemsmith?
With that, the motion passes unanimously. There were no objections. The next item then will be reports from staff.
Thank you, Chairman. I am here with Randy Hernandez. He is the executive assistant currently, and he will be integrating into the Community Development Department as well. We also just posted for a planner-mapping tech position, so that application is available to the public. If you know anybody who is interested in the job, please, you know, reach out to our HR department. We do not have any applications for the January meeting, so there's that. And I think that is everything I have.
What's the job title again?
It's a planner/mapping tech. So the job...
Mapping tech?
Yes. So it includes planner duties, which is like Planning and Zoning Commission, minutes, legal notices, HDRC, as well as the GIS portion of the job, which is maintaining the town maps, being available for other departments to be able to create maps, things of that nature.
With that, the next item will be reports from commissioners. Commissioner Kennedy?
I'm back, and I survived my trip to South Africa. Glad, I'm glad to be home.
Are you now fluent in Afrikaans? No?
No, I'm learning Setswana, though.
Nice.
Commissioner Bayless?
Yeah. One of the difficulties with looking at the Planetizen programs and the coursework they have there, it kind of sparks all kinds of thoughts. And there was one course that I took that talked about the aesthetics of the town and how it contributes to esprit de corps and, you know, a general feeling, a good feeling. So I think we should recognize anytime we see somebody, any person or institution doing something that actually beautifies a town. And it might be nice. I noticed that Western New Mexico University put up a big statue. It's kind of a Modigliani Erno Sarnen type of thing with a big rock in the middle. But whether I like it or not, it's a very good effort to make the, just improve the looks of the area. I know that a lot of times government projects have to have a certain percentage of their budget dedicated to artwork, but I'm happy to see that statue, and it might be nice, that sculpture installation. It might be nice if we sent a letter to the provost or president or somebody and say, hey, you're making it look better around here, and we know as a Planning and Zoning Commission that things that look better make people feel better. So I would encourage, I would be glad to write the letter, by the way.
Thank you. And I believe at the last meeting, you would say you were going to look into writing letters for people who install tiny homes and things like that.
Yeah, I had a little bout of some flu or stuff, so it slowed me down a little bit, but I did want to just informally, and I don't know if this is considered ex parte or not, but see if we could get backing from the city council to maybe join us in the effort of recognizing the building that I was talking about is at the corner of San Vicente, I think in Texas or something. Anyway, I'm terrible at geography, but it's a tiny home. It was erected there on just a little postage stamp pot of land. Looks like one of those places that kind of unfolds. And somebody spent a lot of money and time and energy to put that there, and so it gives us an affordable option there in that neighborhood, and it uses some land that was just sitting there kind of fallow. And we need to recognize that kind of effort as well because somebody's spending their money to give us some more affordable housing and filling in vacant space. The consultants pointed out how much vacant space we do have around here. And if we can recognize those efforts, then it encourages more.
Thank you. Commissioner Middlestaff?
I have probably completed 10 to 12 hours on Planetizen. As you know, it's difficult to actually track which courses you've taken and find, go back and figure out what you've taken, so I was not able to come up with a summary of courses. But I found it very useful, and I hope it's something we continue in the future for new members of our committee. I don't know that I have anything else.
Good.
I mean, I would like to know what's going on with our contractors. Where would that go?
With who?
With our consultants.
Perhaps the director would like to amend the staff report?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you.
I didn't come, I'm sorry, I didn't think of it when you were reporting.
Oh, that's okay. So, I have a meeting with them this Friday, and they have been drafting an employer survey to get some information from some of the large employers within the area to see if they've had any issues pertaining to housing with their staff. They also had a meeting with the town manager about some of the projects that he has implemented through his position throughout the years, and that was very beneficial. There was a lot of great information through that. So they are still working. I think right now, they're focusing on the housing plan to get it to completion before we finish up with the land use code because we want everything that is in the housing plan to be reflective of what regulations we'll be using in the future. So, the last time I saw an invoice, I believe, it stated there were about 53% done with the housing plan and like 3% done with the land use code, but that is a much, much larger project.
Thank you.
In which case, it's my turn for my report. We do have a vacancy on Planning and Zoning Commission. And if anyone is... And if anyone is interested, please contact, uh, any of the commissioners, contact me. My email is on the town's website as chair of the commission. Or contact the director of Community Development or contact the town clerk, Alfredo Sadio. We have a lot of fun on this commission. We are less formal than town council and that is specifically articulated in the New Mexico Municipal League. So if anyone thinks we're a little bit looser than the town council, that's why. It is part of the process. If you are interested, we meet once a month, the first Tuesday of the month at six o'clock. And we do have, uh, well, what we're looking for, someone who simply read the staff report, listen to testimony and decide, gosh, have we met our findings? And that's what, basically what we do. We do have a handbook spiral bound that each commissioner gets, which has lots of information should you so need it. So if you're interested, please give us a call. As far as training goes, I've completed the time that I was allowed on Planetism and I've done quite a lot of courses. I did obviously the commissioner training one. And I, I did find it was, had excellent additional information that perhaps I hadn't seen on from municipal league training. I also did the training on form-based code, uh, which is quite an extensive course. Uh, other items, uh, there is a one-page report in our packet, which is a summary of what we did this year without going all the way through it. Uh, I'm very proud to say that I think in the first time since when I was on the town council and now on the commission, we've had, uh, training provided for the commissioners to improve the quality of our work. If it would help me not being tongue-tied when I spoke, that would be very helpful. We revised the bylaws, they were somewhat outdated and we do keep reviewing them for simplification or any corrections that are needed. We've done role plays with commissioners to show that it's a lot easier to think what, uh, to do the job than perhaps it sometimes is. And those role plays have highlighted certain standard screw-ups that happen and what can be thrown at you while you're conducting a hearing. We've also, based on one of the commissioners in 2023, got involved in reviewing the land use code. And as you've heard, uh, we do have consultants now involved. The, as part of that, any commissioner or member of the public can suggest changes or amendments to the land use code. We have a book for that. Because of ordinance 1333, I, I went through the ordinance that we have for cannabis, the new ordinance and also the state statutes of various other things. And so I produced a report. This is for two reasons. One of them is to help commissioners in that I've gathered all the information in one place. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not an attorney. So this is purely information and I encourage you to double-check it on the appropriate websites. But the other reason I did that is I like to look at other municipalities and what they do because out of that come best practices. And I've found a couple of things that a number of municipalities have looked into separation between cannabis businesses and also separation between the cannabis business and the residence or a residential zone. So this report simply talks about that. And the only reason I mention all this is out of that came two recommendations to go in our book during the review of the land use code. The decisions are not up to us, they're up to the town council. So, uh, that is why I produced that report. Uh, I understand that we have no cases in the January hearing, but we do have some things we do have to address. One of them is the annual open meetings app resolution. I've included a copy in the packet so that you have a chance to read it well in advance of the January meeting. We also have elections where you get to choose who your chair will be and you can nominate any one of the commissioners and also the, um, vice chair. And so that will be pretty much the business of the January meeting, it won't be too long. And with that, I think we've run out of things to talk about.
Well, I want to say that you are largely responsible for all of our successes and we're grateful to work under your tutelage and leadership.
Here, here.
I, I, I very much appreciate the, uh, the, the positive greetings. And, um, you shouldn't let that bias you when it comes to elect a new chair.
Oh, we're biased.
With that hearing...
Wait, I had, there's a thought stuck in my head that's, that I...
Will it get unstuck?
No, it's... I don't think it... No, never mind. Oh, are we gonna do like a, are we gonna do a, an act?
They're called role plays.
Role play, thank you. It was stuck.
We do have a couple of short role plays of things that have actually happened in all the time I've been on the commission. And they're very simple, they're easy to solve, but that way if it happens, what would you do if you didn't have a quorum? And what would you do if you did, but there was no chair or vice chair present? How would you handle that? So that'll be the next role play we do. When we do the role plays, we usually, they haven't been televised because we want all of the possible screw-ups that we can possibly make, uh, to, for educational purposes. So we'll see how that works.
I'm happy to, uh, screw up, um, the next time. I haven't had a chance to do it.
We, we have a, so we have a volunteer.
A land to the slaughter.
Who? Lance, the slaughter.
I know what I'm gonna say.
Yes.
I believe the property that you have mentioned was one that came before this commission for a variance.
Oh, really? Yeah. Huh, that's cool.
So they got their thanks.
They did get it done, didn't they?
Yeah. They were able to do that because we allowed them to.
With that, no other comments from staff or commissioners? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn today's meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously, we are now adjourned.